You're on.
I'm on. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the July 17th, 2023 Board of Selectmen meeting. I'd like to take time to introduce the members of the Board and our Town Administrator. We have Rebecca Oldham over there, Town Administrator, Kathy Castren Ellis, Jason Naves, Mark Pronto, Edward Watson, and myself, Daniel McDonald. Please join us in singing the Pledge of the Allegiance.
Pledge of the Allegiance. The United States of America, the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, and every and all.
Thank you, everyone. First up, we have public comment, written submissions for public comment. Do we have any attached here? There aren't any. No comments. We have a presentation of certificates to the Langley Adams Library Youth Group to recognize their art installment titled, "Is It Art: Being Dislaid at Town Hall?"
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If I may preface this item, we have our second art installment that we are presenting here at Town Hall. This time, it's from the tween and teen group, and the display is entitled, "Is It Art?" It's really exciting, if you take a look at it, to see how art can be reused and repurposed in such a creative way, and I think the group did a really great job with it. And Bergen Daly, our Youth Services Librarian, is here to discuss a little bit more about the thought process that went into this particular project.
Still unfamiliar with this microphone. Can everyone hear me okay? Okay, thanks. Again, thank you. My name is Bergen Daly, and I'm the Youth Services Librarian at Langley Adams. Over the past year, I've held a variety of debate and create programs for middle- and high-school-age students. The group typically includes a combination of students that homeschool and students that attend our local schools. Some are here with us tonight. Welcome. We always begin with an introduction to the topic, learn about well-known artists or scientists related to the theme, and then debate the topic respectfully as a group. When we have saturated the discussion, I provide a variety of materials, and the students go to work. For this particular project, the theme was, "Is It Art?" We looked at a number of works, learned about artists such as Warhol and Koons, and debated if the now-well-known banana taped-to-a-wall piece that recently went for $120,000 at auction was, in fact, art. During the conclusion of the program, the students used their talents to create their own pop art. Some took their work home to complete, and others pulled from their participation in the VC Rubbish-to-Runway event a few weeks back. The use of color, recyclable materials, and symbols of popular culture, such as Amazon and Dunkin', make for an intriguing and eye-catching display for the Town Hall. This group of people are especially bright, respectful, and fun to work with. I'm thrilled that they're being recognized for their creativity and talent. Thank you all for the opportunity.
So I figured that the Board could, all the citations are all the same except for the names, so we could read one of the citations and present to the group here their individual citations.
Sure. We have here in front of me, it's my pleasure to present these to you, certificates of recognition, in recognition of your contribution to the Langley Adams Library tween and teen group, "Is It Art: Art Instalment at Town Hall." Community-based arts practitioners bring members of a community together to solve problems, build relationships, and get involved in ways that rebuild. Thank you for bringing vibrancy into Town Hall and strengthening our community identity. Sincerely from the Groveland Board of Selectmen. So with that, maybe I'll call everyone up individually and present your awards. Okay?
Does he know who's here?
Not everyone is here tonight, so I can collect the others.
Okay. All right. Do we have Dominic St. Clair? Thank you, Dominic. Xavier Clemensy. Ben St. Clair. All right. Gabrielle Funche. Isaiah Shimer.
The others are not here either, but...
No one else, that was it?
But I'd love it if their names were...
Oh. Owen O'Connor, thanks a lot. Irene O'Connor.
Thank you very much.
All right, thanks a lot, appreciate it.
Could we possibly get a photo before we...
Could we get a photo with the group as well as the Board of Selectmen?
Sure, come on up. Stand in front of the, Tim?
How do you want us to do this?
Stood back here last time when they were in front.
Oh, okay.
Yes, stand there, maybe turn around.
Centered, yeah. There you go. That's beautiful. Jason, he's messing with you.
Thank you.
All right. That's awesome. Always fun, that's the fun part.
Thank you so much.
Okay, approval of the minutes, Board of Selectmen meeting minutes, May 22nd, 2023. Everybody read those.
Yep, make a motion to approve minutes for May 22nd, 2023.
Second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Board of Selectmen meeting minutes, June 5th, 2023.
Make a motion to approve minutes for June 5th, 2023.
Second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Board of Selectmen meeting minutes, June 20th, 2023.
I make a motion to approve the minutes for June 20th, 2023.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Yep.
Unanimous. Appointments to the Board. Appointment of Donna Arnold of Pinewood Lane Groveland as Assistant Treasurer/Collector and Benefits Coordinator effective July 1st, 2023. The position is 37.5 hours a week at a rate of 33.34 cents per hour. Appointment at the July 5th meeting. Board is voting on updated rate of hourly pay. Rebecca, what was the, what was the change on that, the delta?
So we had established through an opinion by the Town Council in regards to the omnibus and how the rates are set, and we had incorrectly listed her at a higher rate than what the allocation was, so we adjusted the hourly rate to reflect the allocation as voted on in the budget.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Yep, make a motion to appoint Donna Arnold of Pinewood Lane Groveland as Assistant Treasurer/Collector and Benefits Coordinator effective July 1st, 2023. The position is 37.5 hours per week at a rate of pay of $33.34 per hour.
Second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Yep.
Unanimous. Appointment of Sophie Pettit, Benjamin Street, to Recreation Committee effective July 17th, 2023 through June 30th, 2024. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to appoint Sophie Pettit, Benademan Street, to the Recreation Committee effective July 17th, 2023 through June 30th, 2024.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Um, yes, I just, if you please, she, she wrote a really nice letter about our town. I'm just scrolling down to it. I didn't know if the chairman wanted to read it or if we should read it.
Would you like to read that, Kathy?
I would like to, yes. Thank you. This is from Sophie Pettit. She said, her previous email, it said they were moving to Groveland, and then she said, "Hi, we are here. We are now part of the Groveland community, and we are already in love with the people around us. They're all very welcoming, and if you're still looking to appoint me, I'm excited to join the Recreation Committee." And I just thought that was such a sincere and upfront statement about the town and people that she was meeting that it deserved to be shared, and I hope, I hope it's okay with Sophie, but I really appreciated that shout-out for the town and that she's really happy to be here and we're happy to have her on our Rec Committee.
There you go, welcome aboard. Anything else? All those in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Next up, appoint poll workers for the period, September 1st, 2023 through August 31st, 2024. There's a list of them here, I'll read off their name and acknowledge these people. Julie Fabry Clark, Laria Blank, Warden, Jennifer Close, Warden, Frances Slattery, Poll Worker, Evelyn Tuttle, Poll Worker, Marion Hodges, Poll Worker, Dorothy DeChara, Poll Worker, Laurel Pachalski, Poll Worker, Janet Nolan, Poll Worker, Maria Frederick, Poll Worker, Suzanne Credit, Poll Worker, Irene Thomas, Poll Worker, Kathy Alessi, Poll Worker, Anna Porter, Poll Worker, Judith Gusby, Poll Worker, and Deborah Stevenson, Poll Worker. There's more on the back. Anne Marie Jarefalo, Poll Worker, Rene Laurenti, Poll Worker, Maureen LeLocke, Poll Worker, and Teresa Brugman, Poll Worker. Is there a motion?
Motion to appoint...
Second.
Thank you, any discussion?
Yes, I do have a question. Of the please, the Town Clerk, I know we need to do this between July 15th and August 15th, is that correct? And I'm just wondering, do you reach out to each of the town parties in town to ask for a list of possible poll workers or not?
I have not, no. We don't have a Republican Committee at this point that's active, and no one's out and should have to the Democrats.
Okay, I just, I was reading some things, and I thought that...
They are supposed to submit nominations of names, but they...
Right, I thought you were supposed, okay, I'm just, I was reading some things.
Yeah, it doesn't come from me.
I mean, this list is, these are very nice people, and I just want to make sure we're doing this properly, that's all.
Beth, can I, go to the podium and just explain to us how these names came to be and what the, what the...
They're all current poll workers. Many of them have been for years. They were here before I arrived, and they are still wonderful workers with me. The Democratic Committee and the Republican Committee can offer names. If they don't, the Board of Selectmen can offer names, but you haven't, and so this is my opportunity now to present the people that have worked in the past and ask for your approval.
So these people have been doing it ongoing, and they wish to continue to do it, and if anyone else is interested, they could come to you or the Board of Selectmen and express their interest in it, is that, is that the case?
Absolutely.
Okay.
We would love to have more people, because we really don't have a great rotation in the event that we have a, an illness or somebody that, you know, can't make it. I don't have a pool to really pull from.
Could there be more, or is this a finite list and you're limited in number?
No, it definitely could be more.
Okay. Any other questions?
So we can add to it.
Yeah, yeah, you can add to it.
Even though you say July 15th to August 15th, that's just to get the ball rolling? In other words, you have to...
That would be for this time period, so you would add to for next, for the next time period.
So no one else can come forward if they come forward after August 15th?
They can if they express interest and they take a training class, because all poll workers have to be trained before they work.
Oh, okay.
So yes, I do run a training class, and that's how I got a couple of the additional people who are on here.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
You're welcome, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Yep.
Unanimous. Next up, we have a public hearing pursuant to General Laws, Chapter 40, Section 22, provides the Groveland Board of Selectmen with the authority to promulgate parking regulations within the town. Therefore, the Board of Selectmen on July 17th, 2023 at 7:00 PM, no?
So the public hearing's at 7:00 PM, so can we pass that item and go to the streetlights, and by the time we're done with that, we'll be able to jump back into the public hearing?
Sure. Because it has to be.
At 7:00 PM.
Gotcha.
My apologies.
That's my fault, you know. All right. Strike that. Discussion of possible votes, approve streetlight placement at Center Street, now Washington Park. Whose agenda is that?
So there was a request made by the Groveland Baseball to add two lights to two of the poles over on Center Street. Specifically, they wanted to add a light on pole 47 and 49, and they would be angled to focus the light onto the parking lot area. There had been a couple of questions that were forwarded over to me by Selectwoman Castren Ellis. I don't know if she wants to ask those specifically, but it has been reviewed by the Groveland Municipal Light General Manager Kevin Snow, and he agreed with the placement of the lights. It has also been shared with Chief Gillen from a police standpoint and safety standpoint, and he also agrees that this would help that particular area during the late evening hours.
Does it require Board of Selectmen approval?
Yes, it does.
Is there a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion, then we approve it. It sounds like a reasonable request. It is, it is doc over there at times.
Is there a second?
Like you submitted the proper paperwork. Excuse me?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
No, I'm all done.
You weren't finished? Continue.
I'm done.
Get done. Mark seconded it. Any further discussion?
Yes, I just want to make sure that the friendly amendment to your motion, that these lights are angled so that they're on the parking lot and not onto the houses that are right across the street there. I mean, we do have a lot of lights over there right now, so, you know, my concern was not to impact the neighborhood and people trying to sleep, that's all, because these are going to be on all night, I would assume.
Who would actually install the light, does anyone know?
The Municipal Light Department.
There'll be the streetlights.
All right, so they're going to do it right with the right kind of lighting and the right angle, I would hope. But I agree with that.
Friendly amendment, if it's okay, yeah.
Sure.
That they're angled so that they are on the parking lot...
Can we vote on the friendly amendment?
Not on the homes. Thank you.
All right. Do you agree to that friendly amendment, Mr. Watson?
No, I think we should leave it up to the, I think we should leave it up to the, the head of the electric department to put it in the most advantageous spot.
Mr. Chairman...
You want to hold on that, you want to vote on your friendly amendment?
Excuse me. The request said that it would be angled at the parking lot, and Mr. Selectman Watson did not include that in his motion. I just want to make sure the motion is what they asked for. They said angled at the parking lot.
Do you have any objections, Mr. Watson?
That's what they asked.
Subject to the discretion. The battle of wording.
What was that?
They're going to angle it at the parking lot.
I think it should be his call.
All right, I guess we'll vote on Kathy's friendly amendment then, is there a second on Kathy's second amendment, is that the procedure?
I'll second her.
Okay, so that's any further discussion on the amendment? No, let's vote on the amendment, Kathy's amendment to angle it towards the parking lot, all those in favor? Vote in favor, want to oppose, okay. Now we'll vote on the, the motion as amended. Any further discussion on the motion as amended? No further discussion, all those in favor of the motion as amended? Five, unanimous, thank you. I'm moving right along. Rescind vote for salary reallocation in the Town Clerk's budget. Rebecca, could you comment on to the rhyme and reason as to why?
Yes, we had received a comment from a resident who had attended the meeting two weeks ago in regards to whether or not we acted within our legal capacity to increase the salary or decrease the salary as suggested. So that email was forwarded over to Town Council for additional information, and they specifically called forth Massachusetts General Law 41, Section 108, which states that the salary and compensation of all elected offices of a town shall be fixed annually by a vote of the town at annual town meeting, but said salary or compensation may be revised by a two-thirds vote of any special town meeting called to conduct business later in the same fiscal year, for which said salary or compensation was originally fixed. So as part of our warrant article, Article Number 46 specifically sets the salary for all elected and appointed individuals. So this is something that the Town Council had reviewed and weighed in in terms of the fact that it would need to be approved by the Board of Selectmen as the Personal Advisory Board, the Finance Board, and again, ultimately, town meeting.
So effectively, we voted on something that the general rule may allow for reallocation, but the statute specifically prohibits modification of elected officials' salary, is that correct?
That's what Town Council has described, correct.
Okay, so with that, I make a motion that we rescind the vote of our prior meeting for the salary reallocation in the Town Clerk's budget as it was an error of law. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion?
Well, do we need to make the specific votes, or do we just say rescind our last vote?
Well, I think we know what we're talking about.
I do, yeah.
We can't, we can't, I mean, if we need it verbatim, then we can do that, but I think it's on point that we previously had voted, I think it was a 3-2 split, to reallocate the Town Clerk's salary, I think the amount was $2,600 and change, to another person, and whereas the Town Clerk is an elected official, only a vote of town meeting could authorize that, as well as other boards, right?
I think that should be long, that should be fine as long as you reference the numbers voted by the omnibus, or that the omnibus was voted by town meeting.
So my motion will be, we'll rescind it so that we are consistent with the omnibus as voted at town meeting, and our reallocation was inconsistent. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mark seconded it. Any further discussion, Kathy?
No.
Jason? Mark? Edward? All right, with that, all those in favor to rescind? Unanimous, thank you. And I appreciate the person that brought that to our attention. If you see something, say something, we're not perfect. I'm not. Creation of Public Grounds and Cemetery Division and Building and Facilities Division underneath the Highway Department. This is a topic by the Town Administrator, Highway Superintendent, Rockdower Cemetery Commission Chair, and Steve McPherson. Kathy?
Chairman McDonald, I'm going to recuse myself, as my husband is a cemetery commissioner. He's out of town.
You are recused. We'll call you when we're done. Okay, would you like to lead, lead off? Rebecca, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So essentially, as we have established throughout the years, that the structure is fragmented in terms of what we have for our cemetery maintenance, public grounds maintenance, and building and facilities, facilities maintenance. This oftentimes can lead to inefficient use of resources and monies, and is not always an effective way to utilize the staffing capacity within these certain departments. So working very closely with the Highway Superintendent, we sat down and we tried to figure out exactly what we could do in order to best approach this issue and to cause a more or create a more collaborative environment where the resources and capacity can be shared multiple ways. And so we came up with establishing, what you'll find in your packet through the memo, a structure that would be the Highway Department with specifically focusing on a Public Grounds and Cemetery Division, a Building and Facilities Division, and then as well as a Roadway Division. And each one of those divisions would allow for a certain focus within the Highway Department that we can really focus on a lot of different areas that are all kind of overlapping. So for example, with the Public Grounds and the Cemetery, a lot of that involves the maintenance of the grounds, and so you'll need mowers and you need certain machinery in order to keep the grounds. It doesn't make sense to use taxpayer dollar to buy two mowers for the cemetery and then three mowers for the Highway Department, who takes care of the parks and other open-space areas. So our proposal combines those particular resources so that they can be utilized more efficiently, and that includes the staff up there currently. We have our Cemetery Superintendent, who is currently has left, unfortunately has left us, but particularly that role is very active in the fall and summertime, but they're not really as active during the winter times, because there's not much of ground maintenance that needs to be done. So this would allow that particular individual to then be utilized by the Highway Department in a more efficient way in terms of helping with snow and ice and other items throughout the year that demand attention. The same kind of setup with the Building and Facilities. The Building and Facilities focuses a lot just on the cleaning aspect of things, but there's a lot of other things that come into play with the buildings and what we need for procurement purposes and what we need in terms of, you know, getting quotes for things that need fixing, like the roofing, whether it be plumbing, electrical, and we really need somebody to help facilitate those types of conversations and to coordinate that effort. And it would be best to have somebody with the background, which would be the Highway Superintendent, who is more familiar with those types of projects, to lead that effort and to then utilize those resources more efficiently so that we're not carrying in other consultants and other, spending other monies for people to do work that we could very well do in-house. Before getting any further, I might want to stop just because we're at the 7:00 PM mark.
We'll get two minutes. So is Highway Superintendent and the Cemetery Commission Chair on board with us?
So we did have initial conversations with the Cemetery Commission. They were a little hesitant at first to join in because they were afraid as to whether or not they would lose their ability to operate and get the resources that they need to make sure that the grounds are amenable and looking nice. But overall, through a lot of conversations and the ability to advocate for themselves in a, in a more productive way utilizing this structure, they seemed to come around. I invited the chairman here this evening, we've had multiple conversations, but he is not with us this evening, but at the same time, I do know that the latest vote by the Commission, they voted unanimously to move in this direction. However, they expressed a desire for it to be a phased approach so that it wasn't just dissolving the Cemetery Commission and just jumping in, but that they would be able to see if it was working and we were heading in that direction. And the Highway Superintendent is here this evening, as well as Steve McPherson from the building side, and both of those individuals have expressed strong support for moving in this direction.
All right, we'll have to...
Mr. Chairman, one point of water.
Was the, he had...
Some for the public hearing?
Yes, thank you. pursuant to General Law, Chapter 40, Section 22, provides the Groveland Board of Selectmen with the authority to promulgate parking regulations within the town. Therefore, the Board of Selectmen on July 17th, 2023 at 7:00 PM will hold a public hearing to discuss parking restrictions on Sunset Circle. Sunset Circle is an accepted, accepted public right-of-way, accepted at annual town meeting on April 29th, 2023, as laid out on Plan Book 470, Plan 70, recorded at Southern Essex Registry of Deeds on April 2nd, 2019. Such regulation will state that, quote, "There shall be no parking on the westerly side of Sunset Circle from street entrance to the furthest point of the cul-de-sac," as laid out on Plan Book 470, Plan 70, recorded at Southern Essex Registry of Deeds on April 2nd, 2019. Would anyone like to speak on the issue of the parking regulation?
Mr. Chair, real quick, I did, would like to point out that there's an error in the date that was mentioned, it should be April 29th, 2019, not 2023. An annual town meeting on April 29th, 2019, not 2023.
2019, let the record state that it was on the annual town meeting on April 29th, 2019, and not 2023. Yes, sir, state your name for the record, please.
Steve Baker, five Sunset Circle. You know, just want to reiterate, as I said last time I was here, really, we're just trying to ensure that public safety vehicles can get down the street in the event of an emergency. It's a narrow street to begin with, and when people are parked on both sides, which happens fairly frequently, you know, it's pretty, it will be pretty difficult, if not impossible, for an ambulance or a fire truck to get down the street. if not impossible, for an ambulance or a fire truck to get down the street.
Any on the streets on board with us?
Say that again?
Is everybody on the street on board with it?
Yeah, so I shared a letter last time I was here that everybody signed. I think everybody agrees that it's something that needs to happen. I don't know if anyone else has anything to add, but.
Okay, anyone else? Anyone in opposition? Anyone in favor? Has this been approved by the police and fire and highway department?
Yes, the highway department has signed off on it. The police chief has signed off on it, and the fire chief is here as well this evening, and he has also signed off on it.
Okay, anyone else? No one else on the public hearing? So we do procedurally close the public hearing?
Yes.
Okay.
Don't we vote? Yes.
Close it and then vote, right?
Yes.
Vote then close.
Vote then close.
Vote then close?
I've always closed the public hearing.
Thought you'd close it and then vote.
You were right.
I was right, hey?
Once in a while.
Gold star. All right. Do I need a motion to close the hearing?
I make a motion to close the hearing at 7:03 PM.
I'll second that.
Any discussion on closing the hearing? All those in favor? All right, now we'll take up the issue. We had the public hearing, now it's balls on our side of the court. Would someone like to make a motion to adopt this parking regulation? And do I need to read it again?
You can read it as a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Go for it.
I'll make a motion to adopt pursuant to General Law Chapter 40, Section 22, of the Board of Selectmen. Why don't I just say this?
There shall be.
Strike that, all right. I make a motion to adopt a regulation that states as follows. There shall be no parking on the westerly side of Sunset Circle from street entrance to the furthest point of the cul-de-sac as laid out on Plan Book 470, Plan 70, recorded at the Southern Essex Registry of Deeds on April 2, 2019.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous, thank you. I'll circle back to creation of the public grounds and cemetery division and building and facilities division underneath the highway department. Where did we leave off with that topic? Do we have people on that matter?
So Rennie Carroll, the highway superintendent is here.
Kathy recuses herself again.
Is here this evening and can speak more in terms of his expertise in the area and his support for moving forward if the board so pleases.
Sure, I'd be happy to hear from him. About you, Mark. How are you, sir? State your name for the record, please.
Rennie Carroll, highway superintendent for the town of Groveland.
Thank you.
This would be, this is, we've been talking about this for quite a while, about more utilization of the staff that we have on hand. This is kind of a standing operating procedure for a lot of small towns. We have, you know, a very small workforce, and we need to just expand on what we can get out of our workforce, and this will help us, you know, with the cemeteries. They'll have a little more equipment, they'll have some more part-time help and a little bigger and broader budget. I know that the cemetery commission is a little worried about the cemetery, will be the superintendent, going from superintendent to supervisor, him not having enough time to do this, but we're going to put other workforce in place to assure that everything gets done. The cemetery will still be his priority, but he'll also be pulling off doing other green spaces and other grounds in the town, other than just the cemetery. In the winter time, when his time's a little limited, he'll be doing a lot more snow plowing, not just the cemetery, but again, facilities within the town that take up resources that we pay, that we outsource and pay more money for. So it's just a better use of the staff that we have on hand to get a little more.
So it'll help facilitate sharing resources and just manpower and equipment?
Equipment, yep, because we have more mowers, there's no sense in, you know, buying, purchasing more mowers for just the cemetery department, like just the highway department. We have enough to kind of shear around and get more stuff done.
Do you foresee any issues with authority or, I guess, who's the boss, you know? Is that going to be, I'll keep saying the Indians.
Yeah, so the restructuring, the way it will go, it'll be instead of a cemetery superintendent and a highway superintendent, there'll be a cemetery supervisor who will supervise the part-time employees and any contractors that he has working for him. And then obviously, any issues will fall on my shoulders.
So that'll change the titles?
That's part of the restructuring, yes.
And who will that impact?
Not really anyone.
Currently, it won't impact anyone because the cemetery superintendent has left. And one of the feedback from former employees in the highway department is there really is no room for growth and expansion within the highway department as to ways to move up, and this provides that pyramid kind of structure that allows those laborers who have been with the town to hone in their skills in those particular areas and gradually move up through the ranks and actually get to expand on where they are from a monetary standpoint as well into those specific roles. But currently, right now, there is nobody in that cemetery role, so it wouldn't have a direct impact on that level. There is currently a facilities coordinator that we are moving into a building and facility supervisor role if this is approved and that position is filled, so it would be a title change. And that individual is here to express his support in moving forward in that direction.
What about the bottom line? Is it going to change the budget? Is it going to require more salary and wages and, you know, benefits and pensions?
No, it's not going to, it's not going to impact the town other than you'll get more out of your staff. And the part-time budgets that are already in place will be able to be shared across both departments, and it should broaden their capabilities.
Okay.
That's the way I see it.
All right, so you want it?
More bang for your buck.
And the cemetery commission wants it, or just the chair? Is the whole cemetery commission vote on that?
They did vote on it.
As a committee?
As a board, but I do, I don't want to misspeak for the chair, Rockdower. He has expressed some concerns. I know he's spoken to some members other than myself, and I think he's spoken to Rennie, so he was in support of it, but he is hesitant to make sure that the cemetery doesn't get neglected. He is very concerned that that might be the case of something that may have happened in the past, but they did collectively vote to move forward in this direction.
Well, should we wait and hear his concerns, or that board's concerns?
I do wish he was here, but, I mean, he knew about the meeting.
Is this time of the essence on this, or we can wait one more meeting? I'd like to hear from him if he has concerns.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, I would like to hear from him.
You know, because we could incorporate that and whatever plan that we decide on if we do.
I agree.
So it's all out there and people can listen to it.
Yep, I agree.
So it could wait two weeks.
Sure.
Does anyone have any objections?
Nope.
You know, I don't know if we need a motion. Well, it's possible votes, I just think we put it off for two weeks, and we'll ask him to come back.
Absolutely.
And people know about it now, so anyone else who wants to participate?
Absolutely.
All right, thank you.
You want to motion to table?
A motion to table it.
I'll make a motion to table?
You?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to table.
All right, go ahead.
Mike can second it.
Who's on first? Is there any discussion on the motion to table? Got an echo in here.
No more, no discussion on table.
No discussion. All those in favor?
No.
It's tabled. All right. What do we want to do now? Town administrators time.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to let the board know that we have, or we continue to struggle with the Salem Street Dam. Luckily, over the weekend, the amount of rain did not cause any additional sinkholes or any additional issues with that particular area. However, the former rainstorm definitely still had an impact on that area. DCR came out to inspect the dam and advised us to continue to move quickly to identify funding so that we can remediate the problem. We discussed a couple of options in terms of how to move forward, whether or not a bypass was necessary, draining down the water and going through the necessary permitting and potentially emergency procurement as needed. So the highway superintendent has been working with some outside companies to figure out exactly what the pricing would be on that. I have been working, trying to figure out some potential grant opportunities that we can apply for, for more immediate monies to correct the situation, but we are closely monitoring it, and I just want to make sure that that's something that the board is well aware of. And then also, just because of the new structure, I just wanted to let the board know for the warrants, for the bill warrant, for this particular warrant, we have $1,579,221.76, with breakdown to the town being $259,215.67, the Kentucky assessment being $1,141,779.42, withholding $7,834.18, special revenue revolving $23,456.07, water and sewer is $5,132.88, and light breaks down to $96,803.54. The payroll warrant for the remaining fiscal year '23 is $21,785.26, and for fiscal year '24, since we break out that one day for fiscal year '23, is $219,253.77. And those are all the updates I have for the board this evening.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Rebecca Aldman? Anybody? Next up, Selectmen times, Selectmen's time and reports. Kathy, do you have anything?
You always call them. Okay, I'll go first.
Would you like to go last, Kathy?
No, I'll go first, it's all right. I'll suffer. So I met with Inga, who's in the audience tonight, on the Chapter 70, and she was gracious enough to take a bunch of the worksheets, and she's going to take them home and go over them. And the group continues to work, the loosely formed study group. Takes a lot of eyes and a lot of brains to kind of figure this out, but I think we're making some headway on it, looking at some ideas about the allocations to regional school districts and figuring out why our Chapter 70 is pretty much level funded, and our assessment continues to go up faster than we can keep up. And so the goal is to find solutions, find a way to make sure the school is funded and Groveland can afford its assessments. The other thing that I continue to work on is the idea of solar power. I'm fairly interested in that. I think it's kind of the exciting new thing. I know we have the solar field that was put in about 10 years ago, and the power is sold to Con Edison, who sells it back to the town at like four cents a kilowatt hour, which is a good deal. But, you know, there's two thoughts I had on it. One, that we potentially have land that could possibly host another solar field and sell power to the grid. Not a bad use of land if we're not doing anything else with it. And a second one is, from a homeowner's point of view, as we all look at our increasing bills, increasing taxes, increasing electric bills, increasing water bills, if you're on town sewer, that's probably gone up as well. It's all part and parcel of the same thing. You have to pay all these bills, and you need to be able to balance your budget. So the solar field has really come through a lot of changes. It's become a lot easier to work with. They have a lot of options for homeowners. You don't have to necessarily purchase the equipment. You can finance it and buy it out later, or you can lease it and buy it out later as well. There's a lot of great options. So I've asked for more information. I'm looking at it from a homeowner's point of view myself, and I just wanted to share that out to the community, that it is a very easy thing to do if you're interested in looking into it. I think it's an up and coming thing, and it's gotten a lot easier to access for the average homeowner than it used to be.
Thank you. Sounds like a good idea.
Save a buck.
Save money. Jason?
I don't have anything this week.
Nothing?
Nothing, sir.
Okay. Mark?
Nothing today.
Mr. Watson?
Just maybe an agenda item on the next meeting. On June 5, we appointed an economic development committee. It'll be about two months at our next meeting. Maybe we could get an update on what they've done since June 5. I know that we voted the members, see if they've met, and maybe we put that on for the next meeting, get an update.
You want to invite them in?
They have not met, Mr. Chair. They have not met yet.
They haven't met.
They have not. I believe there's a couple of individuals that still need to be sworn in, and once they get sworn in and complete their open meeting law, sign off in their ethics, that we would be able to convene. I can send out another email after this meeting and ask them where they are in that process so that we can schedule a meeting in August, but certainly, we could add it to the agenda maybe for September, our first meeting in September. Would that do?
Sure. I know there's a certain period of time, there's still an echo in here. There's a certain period of time, once you get appointed, that they have to get sworn in or they're off the committee, and I don't know what that is. Well, the town clerk is still here.
Should be two weeks.
Two weeks, two weeks from the date of appointment.
Two weeks from the date that there's one, that they're appointed.
So they're going to lapse out if they don't get sworn in? They have lapsed. So we appointed a list, and we had three that were sworn in, so.
I think we did nine.
Maybe we can reach out to the other people and see if they're interested, because we need to reappoint them if they're going to actually participate, and we'll have to revote it, right? So we have the list of who we, can we look into that?
Yep, 100%.
Yeah, and if not, we got to get other people.
No, that sounds good. So whoever is not, I'll ask them if they're still interested, and we'll get them on the next meeting. And if they're not interested and they don't want to participate, then I will make sure that we reach out to some other folks to put before the board for their vote and approval.
Because three members is not a quorum. I don't know if it'll get the job done either. You never know, three people that work hard could get a lot done. All right, what's up next?
That's all I got.
That's all you got? I'm in summertime mode, so I don't have any of that. Older unfinished business. We got all kinds of unfinished business, but. Other items not reasonably anticipated at the time of posting. Anyone else? Correspondence? I thought we, did we discuss that? What's attached?
I don't have any correspondence attached.
There wasn't any, okay.
No, there's a piece of mail that was delivered to each of the Board of Selectmen. I believe it's a leadership survey, but other than that, it was, there was no other correspondence.
That's it? Running out of work. Motion to adjourn. Did I forget something?
No.
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 I'll make a motion to adjourn.
7:20.
Maybe I'll oppose that.
You'll oppose that? I should have done more work, you know? Should have added something.
I'll second that.
I don't make work. I try to eliminate it. Seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Yep.
Have a good evening, enjoy your summer.